I've been watching a lot of ripples lately, Steve. I figured it all.
He notified you.
Yeah, he told me to tell you in that, you know why, I didn't send a message.
Soon as black and white shall be ordered, please Christ with pleasure, I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the hundredth, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the good reason just as far. Glory, take your call, please.
Councilmember Rich Scordall.
Here.
Robert Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Steve Feldman.
Here.
Joe Mielbauer.
Here.
Jerry Tate.
Okay, do I have a motion tonight to accept, approve tonight's agenda?
Make that motion.
Mr. Muehlberg makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Bauer makes that second, any discussion? Scordall, rather, I'm sorry.
I know, it's hard to confuse us.
I'm sixty-eight, what do you say? Okay, any discussion? None, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on, do I have a motion tonight to accept tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Muehlberg makes, Muehlberg makes that second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on, Glory, do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Nobody.
Nobody, okay, moving on, okay. All right, new business, let me get here, it says. Two thousand eighteen street reconditioning project, resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five relating to parking restrictions on Lippin, is that how you pronounce it, Paul? Z-Pen or Lippin, speak?
I pronounce it Lippin.
Okay, Lippin. All right, you want to give us the input on that one? Or Joe? Or Craig?
Yep.
All right, I'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, this item is a housekeeping item for the next item, nine B. Basically, two hundred thirtieth, Javaro and Lippin were constructed first and then put on the state aid system. So they were constructed under city standards, not necessarily state aid standards. And Lippin does not have the width required to park on both sides. So as part of the final approval, Ben Dodd is looking for this resolution to be approved. We would limit no parking on Lippin on the west side. So we're requesting approval of resolution twenty eighteen twenty-five, a resolution related to parking restrictions on Lippin Street Northwest. They are going to allow us to not have to sign Javaro on two hundred thirtieth Avenue, but we do have to put a fog line on each side of the street.
Is that that white line?
Yep.
Okay. And from your viewpoint, does this affect that street in any way? I mean, so city standards didn't make it wide enough so that you could park on the street?
Correct, not both sides.
Not both sides, just one side? And they, and we could still, they could still do that, or they could park on the west side, you said?
They could park on, they'll be able to park on the east side, just sign on the west side.
Okay, okay. All right, so nothing different for the residents that live there, though?
No, there's really no houses along that side either, so it works kind of nice.
Okay, okay, I'm not familiar with the street, okay, all right. Anything else on your end, once again?
No.
All right, well, enough for discussion, Joel, I'll start with you, have you anything?
I don't have much, I guess the main thing is that we have to have emergency vehicles that get through. That's the biggest concern.
Correct, and that's what the total lists are based on, so. It's basically seven feet from parking to the road, it's thirty-two, so the rest is always going to be open.
Rob, may I?
Don't, and I understood it based on, on the map, if you look at the map, it just kind of curls around, that's why, it's kind of the north and the west side of Lippin Street.
Rich?
Nope, no comment, seems pretty straightforward.
All right, well, on that, do I have a motion to accept tonight's two thousand eighteen street reconditioning project, resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five relating to parking restrictions on Lippin Street? Do I have a motion? Mr. Muehlberg makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scordall makes that second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on to, street mill and overlay, street project plans and specifications, resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, as requested, prepared plans and specifications for the mill and overlay of Gerani, two hundred thirtieth, Javaro and Lippin. All the streets will be paved with municipal state aid fund except Gerani. One thing to note is, the current state aid balance is just under one point five six million. And you need to spend at least that under one point five million by the end of the year, or you will be penalized about nineteen thousand, so. That's another reason why we're putting this project forward, trying to. It's due and it's in the CIP, but we also want to try to get it done before the end of the year so we don't get penalized. Basically, the project includes milling and paving one point five inch, the top one point five inches and some spot repair. And then we're repairing two, two approaches that don't meet ADA standards on sidewalks. Other than that, again, we're looking for approval of the resolution presented. And the costs, I can go into more if you'd like, but they are presented in your packet.
All right, you know, one of the questions I have, and I'm just curious, it's like on page thirty-six of the packet, it shows, uh, the cost of the city, and the first projection was ninety thousand, that dropped down to seventy four thousand one hundred ninety-four, is that just because of different pricing, or?
Well, when you're putting together a five-year CIP, it's pretty hard, when you're up here at thirty thousand feet, to give a cost estimate exact. So basically, it's saying we have enough money, or we did plan enough money in the CIP to cover this project. And actually, it's right now projected to be sixteen thousand under that five-year.
So that was basically, just like what we ever do, if we take, we bid something, we bid a little high and then work the numbers down as we get closer?
Yep.
All right, that's good, that's what I was curious. All right, are you done at your end, so I can ask some questions on our end? I'll start with Rob on this one.
The only question I really had was the, an assessments on, on this type of mill and overlay, or?
This, this is the type of project we particularly took out of the assessment policy last time.
Okay.
That was one of the revisions.
Because this will be taken by the, the MSA will be taking care of this?
Correct.
Okay, so it's funded by that?
Yep, I just wanted the residents to know that there were no assessments.
Rich?
I think the only question I had in terms of, so you made that comment about, you're kind of tacking on, uh, Lippin Street, Lippin Street, there's a lot of streets in the city you could argue about how you pronounce them. So is there a reason why, so we're tapping on just that little, kind of ninety-degree corner on the north, north side of the map, right? Around two hundred thirty-second, Lippin?
Correct.
Is there a reason why we're just stopping right where we're, right where we are stopping coming south, is that where it's the worst?
Correct, I believe that's what we are doing.
Right, that is the, that area that is having the delamination that we talked about. And it is kind of opening up and is really in poor condition. The rest of that, that development is a part of our street consortium, crack filling and seal coating that will happen this year as well. So that'll be a takeoff point where we stop the new asphalt. We'll take off with seal coating from there. But the condition of, the overall condition of the rest of those streets in that area is that seal coating would provide us significant repair into the future, so.
Okay, all right, that was another question.
All right, then in that case, do I have a motion to approve the street mill and overlay street project plans and specifications, resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scordall makes that second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on to item C, additional skin patching, routine street maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and council, in your packet tonight for your consideration is, uh, just some additional quotes that we received, or some updated quotes that we received for some additional skin patching that we would like to do throughout the city. This is routine street maintenance. And when we first put our, put together our packet for our contractors this spring, we underestimated how much, uh, patching, skin patching would be needed throughout the city. We're hopeful that this next swing here of ten to fifteen thousand dollars will do the remaining skin patching throughout the city.
Okay, and I taught you earlier about this, so I get it straight here for the council and residents. Thirty thousand dollars was budgeted for, but we're not, we haven't, we're only going to use the extra between ten and fifteen thousand, which is a good cush. So say at the high end, there'll be fifteen thousand dollars left over, and you told me some things you're thinking about?
So, Mayor and council, what we've been doing for this, for our asphalt repair and maintenance, um, this year, with the street consortium, because it is new, we've been kind of working ourselves backwards with some of these numbers. We wanted to make sure that our original dollar amount that we had budgeted for crack filling and seal coating within the street consortium, we wanted to make sure we had that number covered. So from there, we've been working backwards, doing some of this additional, uh, crack filling, or replay, or, uh, pothole patching, infrared patching, skin patching, various.
Well, screen replating vehicles, we understand.
Replay is a product that, that we would like to start using more regularly. We're not quite there yet, but we will be adding this product into our routine maintenance. It's a soy-based product that actually we would apply on our newer asphalt roads. It adds and provides more oil, or rejuvenates the asphalt as it's laid, to provide better flexibility so that the roads don't crack as much, and therefore we don't see as much, uh, crack filling required. So it would help us into the future as far as our maintenance provides some longevity to these roads. That's a product that we would, you know, work to next. We've identified some areas that we would do that, but depending upon what we have remaining in this budget for this year, we would probably come to council again with either gravel or replay.
But between the gravel and replay, your opinion would be the replay is better, for longer-term longevity?
Um, I think replay will help our roads into the future. Once we can get on board with that process and make that routine, I definitely think it'd be a product that would help.
I know, I've read about it too, but what other cities do we know using it right now, do we know any?
Uh, I know Hutchinson is using it pretty much regular routine, they're, they're doing quite a bit of it every year. There are counties a little further south that are, are doing this product regularly, so.
All right, is that all you have to say now? All of the rest of the questions, Rich, I'll start with you.
Still trying to kind of wrap my arms around. You know, if this was a different situation, and we had a, a topic in front of us, where, where's the statement? Staff and contractor underestimated the amount of skin patching needed to be completed throughout the city. So we had an estimate, and now we're coming back and we're asking for two times as much money as what the original estimate had in it. I'm just trying to reconcile how we, how we estimated so low. Were we surprised, or did I just not understand your explanation that you just went through?
So, skin patching is a throw-and-go type application. The contractors will typically give this in a price per ton as they are putting the product down. Obviously, potholes are varying in depth, so we don't always know exactly what the quantities are going to be on something like this. That's why it's difficult to estimate how much is going to be required in that, in that situation for those repairs. We were surprised at the quantities required to get us as far as we did. We, we gave the contractor a not-to-exceed price the first time around, and it was quickly met. So we stopped, wanted to reevaluate where we're at, and make sure that we have the budget to, to finish pothole and, uh, pothole patching throughout the, the city.
Okay, well, I commend you on that approach of getting to the point where it's not to exceed, and then stopping and reevaluating. I don't like the idea of, contractors are going to work heck of a lot more efficiently if you just allow them to keep on going and not stop, but.
Right.
So is the, in the end, is this going to be on par with what we typically do in a year?
This is more this year, honestly, this is more. Typically, we, we will do about, I would say on average, between five and ten thousand. But as our streets continue to age, we're finding, you know, the harsher winter is really what makes these roads blow up. The winters haven't been doing us any favors.
Okay.
Definitely, um, more patching than what we had expected this year, so.
Okay, all right, those were my only comments, I think the process worked, we have money in the budget, work that needs to be done.
Good question, by the way.
Pretty much was the same question I was going to ask. And, and the way I understand it is, you budgeted, there's thirty thousand dollars out, but this, this portion of road repair needs a little extra funds. I kind of like the idea of, let's do this work, not to exceed this amount, and then reevaluating it. This is all part of the, the bigger plan of the, the sections of the roads throughout St. Francis.
This is routine maintenance on our roads. I, I think, you know, our approach has always been that we're going to maintain and try and fix potholes as they come up. You know, it's not something that we would want to normally avoid or wait for any length of time. Because they're only going to get worse.
Yep.
Thanks, council.
Further answered questions, the energy gentleman? Okay, a couple of questions I have, though. And first of all, a statement I want to make is, this is why this road plan that we're coming up with here for getting rid of assessments over long, all of that, and keeping, maintaining our roads, this is all going to work hand-in-hand, and these costs will be less and less as our roads get in better shape. Which is a long overdue situation we should have been dealing with earlier. Also, when you went, upon what Rich said, all that, I mean, when you, the, the, the surprise extra potholes and that, I mean, did, is there a certain, do you, how do you come up with, with where you were going to go to begin with with the forty-seven hundred, that, that cap to part? I mean, did you just go out and drive around and all that, or how do you do it?
Typically, our, our first driver for our potholing is our parade route for Pioneer Days. We absolutely want to make sure that the parade route is taken care of first. Anybody marching or, or working that parade route, we want to make sure the potholes are patched and repaired. From there, we'll, we'll pick the next worst spots and just kind of work our way out.
And then you go by calls then, do they, or something?
Yeah, obviously, there's going to be calls, and we'll take them and, and address them as well. I think something to point out, our, our street supervisor did kind of calculate this last, last time they were here and the amount of time that the contractor had spent between their, their machine, which is a, a, basically a dump, dump truck with a, what's called a hot box that'll maintain the temperature of the asphalt so they can work with it longer. That's rolling, they have two guys, they have a roller, and he calculated that at this nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton, we're paying them about three hundred dollars an hour. So two guys, two machines, I think that's a very reasonable price for this work.
And I'm saying, there's no really way you can drive around every road and do an assessment on that, or is there, is there a better way to assess? So we don't have a difference, although I, I agree with, with, with both these, both Rob and Rich about the cap and that, I like that a lot because it gives you the time to reevaluate. But is there a way to be more closer?
So the, what we do focus on as far as precise estimates would be situations where we're going to use infrared patching, or we're going to patch around the structure that we call a plow catcher. There, they're actually cutting out, or they're measuring a spot and performing a task, and those are more specific. So we do go around and we get specific estimates for those spots. When it comes to the skin patching, because it is a throw-and-go situation, and the holes are varying in depth, it becomes a little harder. We do try and drive around and, and take inventory of where they are, so we know what streets they're, the contractor will be on, but it's still pretty difficult to give a dollar amount at that point.
But like I say, I do agree that the, that cap in the beginning, that not to exceed a month, that was a good idea. Any other questions on the council? All right, thank you. All right, then moving on, I want to just, once again, emphasize that the long-term road plan that we are going to be putting into effect in the city, this, this is all going to come out stabilized over years, if we do and keep on taking maintenance. You know, it's like, when you, it's like as we built the way to our chief of city, now we've learned how to maintain it with, with, uh, sidewalks, a little more asphalt plate put in places. You look at a plan, you don't really see that until you get it up and running, and then you see how they're, they're building it, and then you need to learn how to maintain it. And that's what we're doing with the road system in this, the city, which is a bit long overdue. So right now, it's a situation where we want to hit some bank for the buck and lessen the assessments and, and bills in the future. We need to maintain these roads in their position, so. Kind of like, I'm not saying that every road should, it'd be nice that every road have an overlay to it with smooth asphalt, but that won't happen. But we will be getting them in much better shape over the long, so, thank you once again. All right, on that, I will have, do I have a motion to accept additional skin patching and routine street maintenance? Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second? I'll make that second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we want to add a not-to-exceed of fifteen thousand additional dollars? It's up to you.
I would agree with that myself.
I mean, based on your report, fifteen thousand dollars, you think ought to cover the extra?
I am hopeful, yes.
But I also don't want to make, I mean, if we come out at sixteen thousand, I don't want to stop, burn, and then we got to go through this reroll again, but.
Great.
Well, how about if we give it a ten percent cush above the fifteen max? Or five percent, everybody want to work it, knows that song?
I'll call it a not-to-exceed seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, so basically, ten percent is like, maybe sixteen, five, or something like that, anyway, so.
That'd be mine.
So now I need to amend that then, the motion? Okay, so, um, additional skin patching, routine street maintenance, not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Oh, Mr. Bauer makes that motion, I have a second, and I will second that motion. Uh, and, Glory, any further discussion, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Good idea, I like that. Moving on to city buildings.
Mayor and council, in your packet tonight for your consideration is, uh, a project that we've been working on for quite a while. We talked in spring about kind of getting some direction on all of our city facilities, taking a look at what each facility has to offer, and creating a plan to move forward with the efficient use of these facilities, whether it's a stay or go, um, situation. And our main focus would be on, or kind of revolves around the fire station. We've identified quite a few needs at the fire station, and we decided that we should really take a look at, take a look at all of our facilities and put together a plan that can move us into the future. So that we know that we're making a good investment into each one of these buildings, if that's what we need to do. So with these estimates that I, that I did collect, that will help us and help the council make those decisions into the future. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, Rob, I'm going to start with you, because you have something in the beginning to talk to me about, so.
Okay. My understanding about this is, we're looking at a long-range plan to move the city forward, whether we consolidate buildings, we move the city hall into a fire station, Taj Mahal, whatever the residents want to call it. This is a professional plan, kind of like the comp plan. Am I understanding that right?
Yes.
So, I kind of like the idea, um, for, for this, and I guess I'll hold my comment for the, for the next portion. But I'm all about not, not spending money to rebuild a building or refurbish a building, that we're going to have a study to find out if we actually want to keep it or leave it. So, um, I'm kind of okay with the, we need to do the study. I guess it would be the next part of all the needs of the fire station, and until this study comes back and says we can keep the fire station or it needs to be rebuilt. And from my experience of being inside of it, it may be past its due. But I do believe the city needs to do a comprehensive study, and that's what this is, to figure out, do we need to consolidate buildings, which buildings need to stay, which, which need to go. So, um, that's basically my comments about the study.
I, I just want to add to that, that, you know, even if we do the study, let's say, and it comes back and they see, uh, this building really is at a point of beyond, like, I've always believed in a fifty percent repair or replace, so it could cost you fifty percent or more to repair or replace, and I'd be buying new. So let's say it comes into that point where we're at that situation with this building. We still may not be able to do that for years to come, okay, because we have to line up the money, whether it be grant money through the USDA or wherever it may be coming from. We still, they, even though they tell us today that we may, we should be looking to do that building, we're still, we may look, could be five years down the road. So in the meantime, um, those leaks that are in that building, or problems that are in the building need to be solved in the interim. So basically, what this is, like, as you mentioned, is like a capital improvement plan, and the plan of software for equipment, and a capital improvement plan for, for the city itself. That's a roadmap, you know, so that when you see an item that we need, we plant ahead. So we don't, we do gradual increases, more planning so that we're prepared to pay for the setting. So basically, but e- even on any roadmap, there's flexibility. So that, like, when you take a trip and you're on a map, or use your GPS, you may take a left turn, or when the GPS says go straight and it's recalculating, well, you recalculate that. So I understand what you're saying is, but anything the study says is not going to be, we, if we're not going to be tearing out a building just because they say to do it, or, or incorporate the city hall or the public works building because they say to do it. It's going to be how we, by which staff and finance and everybody comes together with dollars and cents, and it makes sense. So I just want to explain that and put that out there. So, Rich, I'll move on to you, if you have any questions on this one.
No, I think it's something we need to do. And the price tag seems kind of expensive when you first look at it, but, you know, to make the math easy, and the people that are doing this are going to charge you about a hundred bucks an hour. You're going to buy roughly two people full-time for five weeks to do a, a study that involves looking at utility rates and going through all of our buildings, and these people are knowledgeable on ADA standards, and there's a lot of things that they can do that I don't think we can do in-house, as kind of we talked about during our work session. And that's one thing I think that this council, and even, I'll say, the previous council I ever just got elected, I think we've done an awful lot that is going to benefit people in the long run. You know, five, six, seven years ago, we didn't have plans on the shelf to help guide future decisions. And this is just one of them that I think is long overdue. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, this isn't going to be something we're going to implement overnight, but if you don't start thinking about this stuff now, you're going to be faced with, you know, a critical decision in a hurry to go deal with the building. So I think this is something that is long overdue, the price is budgeted. So I think, like, it's a no-brainer in my book, I think it's something we need to do.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, I think, I think what it really does is set a baseline that we can work off of, and then we can be flexible through the whole, you know, through the process as we deal with these buildings. That, you know, of course, the fire station has a sixty-one part that's from nineteen sixty-eight, and that was added on to, so. These are things we're dealing with, but you got to have some starting point to know where you're going, so let's give this a direction. Joel, who do you have to come up with?
Basically, everything is said, I think, you know, piggyback on everybody, it's about learning and preparing for it, and having that roadmap, and having that guidance for future people, whether we're here or not. It's about having the money, they're prepared for it, and to repeat it again, it's not like it's going to get torn out over and over. Have to maintain what we have in the meantime until we're prepared to do such a thing.
All right, well, on that, do I have a motion to approve the city buildings, uh, plan? Alright, well, on that, do I have a motion to approve the city buildings, uh, plan inspection? Do I have a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, are you going to be accepting one of the quotes from one of the two vendors?
Okay, or should we just move on to the next, uh, item and then incorporate that as well? Is that what you're gonna do?
Motion to approve the core Pearl Architect for the study.
Right, is that, is that on the next one coming up, am I wrong?
Nope.
That's on this one too? Oh, okay, alright. Well, then, now amend that motion to, uh, do I have a motion to approve city buildings with the, uh, with Pearl Architecture for forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars?
I'll make that one.
Does that, does that motion? Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
Mr. Brown makes that second. Any further discussion? One clarification I will put out is that we budgeted sixty thousand for this. The, the proposal, we're accepting this for forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty. So, that's roughly about eighteen, little under eighteen thousand dollars, uh, extra that we have left over. Um, so I just wanna clarify that with the residents. So, um, Brian, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, now moving on to the next item, fire station building maintenance.
Mayor, council, and your package tonight for your consideration is also relating to the fire station and the remaining, uh, approximately seventeen thousand dollars of the budgeted money for the study. Staff, along with, public work staff, along with the fire chief, took a look at the building. You know, they've had new leadership there, and they've kinda evaluated their utility bills and tried to find some ways to create some efficiencies there, um, maybe lower some of those utility bills, and address some of the, uh, conditions that are starting to deteriorate within the facility. So, we put together a list of potential, um, items that needed to be addressed, and we picked our top priorities, and we put them together in the packet for you tonight to consider. I will, uh, admit that I, I did transpose a number when I prepared this. If you look under miscellaneous repairs, about the middle of the first page, uh, from, on the agenda memo, the number two thousand six hundred and fifty for those additional repairs should have been two thousand six hundred and five, and that would bring you to the total of fourteen thousand, uh, well, it will not be fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty.
It'll be forty-five dollars less.
Forty-five dollars less. So, uh, to get to that number, that twenty-six hundred, or two thousand six hundred and five dollars, you would need to look at the quote from B and B Coatings, one thousand three hundred and twenty for garage door frames and bolards, painting them. And then if you also add that to the quote from Quality Construction, removing the steel door frame for six hundred and sixty-five, remove and replace sheet rock in the women's shower of a hundred and thirty, and repairing open block of a hundred and fifteen, that will add up. I'm sorry, and you add the last page, the estimate for removing five vents on the exterior of the building of three hundred and seventy-five dollars, that will add up to two thousand six hundred and five dollars. So, I apologize for that typo.
So, the total, huh, fourteen, uh, what is that, fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Yes.
And that removal of the vents, of course, is re-blocking where the vents were.
Right. There are four or five vents on the south side of the building that, uh, it would appear that most of the heating and cooling go right out of those vents for that building.
Right, it's right above the suspended ceiling, so it's letting cold air come in during the winter time.
And our cooled, conditioned air to go out in the summer.
So, um, alright, now, anything else, Paul, on your end?
I'll answer any questions you might have.
First of all, uh, I wanna make it clear to the public once again, this was, uh, the study was, for the buildings, was sixty thousand dollars budgeted. Uh, we now picked a proposal for forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars actual. That's, uh, savings, and with the maintenance of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five, it actually, uh, we have a savings of twenty-eight hundred and sixty-five dollars over the money we're spending for the study and, and the maintenance. So, we still are in the black, not the red, which is good. But just to give you a little, uh, 'cause I've walked this building here, and I've gone over with Paul and, and Fire Chief Annette, and our Assistant Fire Chief. The vents that he's talking about are on the backside of the building. There's a suspended ceiling, so it's about, I think, probably about two, three feet above the suspended ceiling, so it gets to the roof line, to the roof bottom. Uh, but that's been blowing cold air in and letting warm air out, you know, cold air in and letting cold air out on the air conditioning. So, blocking them will keep that all in, which is good. Uh, since then, we revamped a, a, a dryer vent that was rented wrong, we've taken care of that. Uh, we've changed the door locks and, and updated the security and that. And then also, um, just to let you know, I believe the date was two thousand twelve, Paul, for that, those two paint bits, was that, was that incorrect on that? And then they came in eleven or twelve? For those, remember the blue and whole building?
Right, that, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was two thousand thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, okay, I stand corrected. Two thousand thirteen, the city got a bid for doing a, painting a whole fire station building. Uh, came into one bid, bid at fifteen thousand, a little over fifteen thousand dollars, uh, using just exterior paint, a standard paint. Then there was another bid, uh, for eighteen thousand and a few dollars over that, uh, for what they call Lastomeric or Loxon XP, which is a rubber membrane, and on rock face block, uh, it's good between cracks or mortar to use a membrane sealant, to seal those areas. So, uh, the city at that time decided to go with three thousand dollars less, uh, and used us a basic exterior paint. And now we have leaks in certain areas when the wind is driving the rain hard against the building in certain locations. So, one of these bids, these estimates are at twenty-seven hundred dollars, basically three thousand dollar savings that did the whole building. This twenty-seven hundred will only do the, uh, the, the locations that we spotted where the leaks on the block are. What's happening is, when the rain is being hard driven in, the block is wicking through the block and inside the building. So, my point here is, um, I've always said that if you give me a short, a short-term gain with a long-term dividend is a good thing, but a lot, a short-term gain that costs you money down the road, you save money in the beginning, but down the road it costs you money, is not a good thing. So, we saved three thousand dollars in two thousand thirteen, and now we're having to spend that twenty-seven hundred. Would've been nice to save, spend three thousand and get the whole building done the right way, but we didn't. That's one of the things we've learned from our mistakes in the past, which we don't do now, um, so that's a good thing, not a bad thing. It's one thing to make a mistake, the best thing is to learn from it so you don't repeat it. Uh, so on that, I will tell you that that's what we're doing, where we picked out the worst locations where the leaks are, we've pinpointed them, and, uh, we will be using what they call a Loxon XP rubber membranes supplied by Sherwin-Williams to solve this problem. Uh, then on the sheet rock itself, and that type of thing, we walked through the area, Paul has with the chief in that. And again, um, I just wanna emphasize that, uh, no matter what the study says, uh, it's gonna depend on our pocketbook and our physical discipline to build a fire station when that time comes. How many years down the road that will be, uh, that's another factor at play, and we'll have to, uh, keep this one as operational in the best shape we can. So, that's what this whole idea is about. I'm adding a turnover to Rob again, because you asked some questions on the sheet rock.
Yeah, um, kind of my understanding, you know, a year and a half into this, and I don't make no, uh, I don't try to hide it, I'm here to save residents' money. And this is kind of what I've seen, it's, it's pattern, the way the city spends money. They wanna do a study, and they wanna do a study about the buildings, whether we keep them or, uh, demolish them and replace them. I understand things are going to be in the future. But a lot of things on this list are cosmetic, and I just wanna get into that mindset that we do a study, we pay the money to do the study, we evaluate the study, then we make the repairs. We don't ask for a study, whether we're gonna keep a building or not keep a building, and then turn around and throw thousands of dollars of cosmetic into a building that we don't know that we're gonna keep. Yeah, we might keep it in the long run, it might be a couple of years before that building needs to come down. The savings of the money cosmetically isn't what I want to ask my residents to pay. It's not something I wanna pay in my taxes. So, that's where I stand on some of the cosmetic things within there. Hundred percent about the paint, we need to keep that building for the next couple of years, so we wanna make sure that the outside walls are great. The vents to repair, the air conditioning that's being wasted, the heat in the winter that's being wasted, I get that, because that's a savings that our residents are actually going to see. Sheet rock on a building that may get tore down in, in several years, maybe after a week. But I would like to know right now that I saved the city fourteen thousand dollars of their tax money that we put into a building that we're eventually gonna just tear down. It's, it, you can pay me forty-two thousand dollars, I can tell you that that building needs to go. So, that's where I'm at about saving our residents' money.
Paul, let me ask you a question, uh, is the sheet rock cosmetic, or is it more to it than that? Are those rooms that we originally, are you really sheet rocking sheet rock that's already there from holes or any problem like that? Or is it falling down or anything, what, what are we doing there?
The, the two rooms that we proposed to, uh, put a ceiling in and sheet rock over are direct access to, uh, again, an insulated portion of the building. Uh, the, the tool room doesn't have a ceiling in it, um, so it's not sealed off.
So, where's that heat go?
It goes up into the rafters, or the cool air goes up into the rafters.
And so, what, what height are we talking about, that, that rafter height? In other words, are we talking twelve feet, or we'll put an eight foot, eight seat, they put ceiling lid in?
We'd put about a lid and eight foot ceiling, uh, and it'd be another four, five, six feet above that.
Okay, so, actually, what I'm saying to you is, it's just not cosmetic, because if you're putting a lid at eight and the ceiling is twelve, all that hot air rises, and you're wasting all that, so now you're gonna bring that down to an eight foot lid, it makes it more efficient. That, I, I understand your point, by the way, and I agree with that point. Um, um, first of all, in my opinion, by the way, before I would add it on to a nineteen sixty-eight building two times more, I would've ripped the whole thing down and built new, okay? But that did happen, so, um, we're thinking different now than we did before, and, 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 and I'm all for saving money, but one thing we're doing differently now is we're spending the money wiser and in the right places, okay? Roads is a good place to start. Roads will be a continuous problem with us, even after we get a handle on it in years to come, it will still be a continuous problem. What we're doing is we're budgeting better, we're spending the money wiser, we're giving more bank for the buck. So, we're actually planting seeds today that'll pay us off for a bigger dividend down the road. So, that's my point with the sheet rock, it's just not a cosmetic, taking, you know, it's not, it's not bolted problem or whatever, but you're seeing, in other words, you're seeing a twelve foot lid now becomes an eight foot lid, that's a saving cost. Is that in both rooms?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Does that clarify that just a little better?
Yep.
Rich, I'm gonna move on to you, any questions you have on this?
Okay. I guess my first question's kind of a comment to Joe, and I don't wanna make a big deal out of this, but here we're talking about spending money on the fire department, and I would think the chief or the assistant chief would be pretty big advocates for their, for the fire department, yet they're missing. And I realize we had Paul, the, probably adequate person to describe the work that needs to be done, but, uh, I'm assuming they had conflicts that couldn't be here, but I would strongly suggest, you know, if we have things like this that are specific departments, that the department heads are here. So, having said that, uh, you know, when you look at this list, you know, we're gonna have to live with this building, you know, however long we live with it. We're gonna be putting band-aids on it, there's just no two ways about it. You know, when you look at this list, there's, you know, like you just clarified, you know, some of the sheet rock, it isn't just cosmetic that's helping to control, uh, the heating and cooling, where that air is going, where you wanna keep it. You know, painting door frames, you know, that's corrosion control. If you don't do that, well, now you're paying a bigger bill down the road, when that door frame rusts out. I hope we have kind of a handle on things that we know, you know, next year, you know, here's the ten thousand dollars we're probably gonna have to spend. Here's the ten thousand dollars we're gonna probably spend the next year. What I really hope doesn't happen, and to kinda go along with what Rob's saying, is I really don't wanna get a surprise twenty thousand dollar bill for whatever it might be, knowing that this building probably isn't for us five years from now. So, I think you guys have a pretty good idea of the shape that the building's in and what's coming down the road. You know, fourteen thousand dollar Band-Aid seems kind of expensive, but maybe next year's Band-Aid is only five thousand dollars, you know? So, I think it's, uh, I think it's something we have to do. We can pay for it with what's left over from what we invited in for the, for the study. But I think getting that study done, and then whether it's this council, the next council's gonna have some decisions to make, what they wanna do with this building. So. That's all.
That's it. Very well, but I agree with that too, by the way. Um, Joe?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I understand Rob's line of thinking, and, uh, I was gonna basically say what you said as far as the, the insulation or the sheet rock. I was gonna ask whether or not it affected efficiency. I'd say, I like to, the thing is, we don't even have a plan for a good building, so we have no idea or no set, set idea of how long this building's gonna be there. So, having the Band-Aid in, is something I think, you know, we, we may have to do. It's, it's not, you know, when you say, correct, you don't fix problems in the first, so, and they gosh, you know, in the future. Hindsight being twenty twenty, the three thousand dollars, we painted the whole thing with a membrane paint. It didn't happen at that time, you know, I don't know what quality was at that time at all we were looking at, but I think that doing what we need to do now is something that we have to take care of to maintain, because we don't have a plan, we can see the whole future yet of this building. I think we definitely needed a fire building, but I don't think we have the means to pay for it or, or any plan set forth for it. So, to me, it's something that, you know, we have to take care of and understanding the corrosion, with the heat, everything like that. I don't know if you're gonna save a ton of money on the heat with the four feet, but at the same time, it's, it's not just cosmetic, so, understanding that too. And, you know, I understand your, your line of thinking, Rob, and I appreciate you suggesting those things.
Well, if anything, uh, with the lid, the big thing we'll do is keep the warm air closer in. And, and so, you, you know, you may not notice a great savings, but at the same time, you're heating a ceiling, it's kind of like a vaulted ceiling in a house. You've got a twelve foot vaulted ceiling, you get on a ladder and change a light bulb at that height, it's gonna be hot, you'll be sweating up at the top of twelve feet, not so much a game foot, so. Um, uh, let me ask you this, Paul, um, when this, these ceilings have been at twelve feet for all this time?
The maintenance tool room, uh, as near as I can tell, has never had a ceiling. The compressor room has a, uh, an older, uh, false ceiling, the ceiling tiles.
Yeah.
Removable ceiling tiles.
Two by four.
And that's their access into a storage area above the, um, training room, and that also provides direct access right to those five vents that go right outside.
That's where the.
You can either just stand, you can stand in the compressor room and, and see outside through one of those vents. So, you know, to, to seal that off, I think, would be important.
No doubt. Now, we ask you, um, is sheet rock the better way to go, or the least expensive way versus a, a acoustic ceiling?
The acoustic ceiling is what's in there, uh, right now, it's, uh, it's in a difficult spot based on, with all the HVAC that hangs from that ceiling already. You can see that, um, that tile is coming down, falling down already.
How about, is the grid is falling, or?
The, the grid is falling, because you can't adequately secure it to the ceiling because of the, uh, duct work that hangs with it.
Okay, but the nice thing about an acoustic ceiling is you have access to those things above it, where sheet rock, you don't. So, are we losing any ability there by doing one, not the other?
So, in the plan, uh, I did add two scuttles into that, so we can get access in that room.
In the areas that you need to do?
Yep.
Okay, that's smart thinking, okay, good, alright. Alright, uh, you know, once again, like I say, and I, and I understand where, where Rob's coming from completely, and the residents' concerns and that, but, but you, we've been a city that's been running, and I've said this many more times in the past meetings, lean and mean for years. but, but you, we've been in a city that's been running, and I've said this many more times in the past meetings, lean and mean for years. When you're running lean and mean, there's a catch-up point that's sometimes where that's going to catch up to you. I mean, you can save, 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 and then all of a sudden, it's like that old commercial on TV that you say, pay, you can pay me now or pay me later. You're going to pay one way or the other. So, we have this building, it's here now, and that's what we have to work with. We, we, I think we all know sooner or later we're going to need to do fire department. But right now, our priority right now, as I walked the streets for last, this little weekend that, uh, Mike Roger, I've been out there campaigning, people are liking the idea of their reduction in the rate, water rates. They're liking what they see with the council as far as keeping on top of the numbers and being fiscally responsible. They like staff working like it is right now, so I truly believe, that, and, and I'm commenting that in the eighteen months here, we've worked really hard, really hard, and we've got the city going, what I hope is the people, the residents I've heard from are seeing it go in the right direction. And I, and I truly believe that it's happened because of multiple meetings, discussions, with again, multiple meetings, due diligence, doing our research, asking questions of things we don't understand, and then being flexible where we can be. This is why we are where we are right now. And I mean, as we, as Rich alluded to at the last meeting, River, Ed, River's Edge is the first development in twelve years that we broke ground on. So, that's a good thing, not a bad thing. So, I think again, yes, we're spending money, but we're spending it in the best, in the right places, and we, we should get some gain from it. As time goes on, it will be easier or less expensive. Mike, do you have something to say at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
If you guys stand, stand up to the mic because some resident texted me and told me that the, extremely difficult to hear the public speaking, so, get close to that mic or hand him.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I, as I sit here and listen, some of you know that I've been in the building trades for thirty some years and I'm sitting here listening to this conversation. I'm not so sure that a membrane paint is what we want to put on that building. I've been a cement finisher for thirty-two years, and I think the better product we'd like to see put on that building is a siloxane. It actually penetrates into the concrete block where the membrane is just going to hang on there. And it'll only hang on there for as long as it's, it has something to adhere to. So, any breakdown in that, the, the membrane is coming off.
So, is that a paint?
You can get it, that's a liquid.
Right, what's the name of it?
Well, there, it's a siloxane base. So, there's tricicloxane out there, and there's a few other ones out there that, that target doesn't tear one of the buildings.
Alright, so, well, I'm glad you brought this up, so why don't you text me that information and we can pass it on to this contractor? Uh, we, I, what we did was we just, I just researched from regular outdoor paint to elastomeric, and I call them Loxan XP. I don't care what, I want the best product to get the best solution, but we need to seal that block, is what we need to do.
Right, and that, that's what you want to use in the tricicloxane base, whether it's a paint or, most of them are clear. They just go on and it looks like water, it really doesn't look like it's doing anything until it rains. And you're just saying, you're completely amazed that it repels the water like it does. The one other thing that I, I hear mentioned is, is the sheet rock ceiling, and that's a brilliant idea by the way, because we're throwing that heat up to the ceiling, not only is it losing the heat, but we're doing terrible things to that roof.
Or heating the roof, that's right.
But my question there is, being that we're putting this, and I think Mr. Bill Power knows where I'm going with this already, being that we're putting that ceiling in there, are we going to have to re-pressurize that building? Bring somebody in from the heating and air conditioning and re-pressurize that whole building? Because we're going to change the aesthetics of that atmosphere by putting that ceiling in there. So, that's something we have to look at also. And, and the other thing, when we start doing these buildings like this and we're going to have a remodel, we should really be looking at a contractor. And, and in the building trades, there's also a thing out there called market recovery money. So, let's say, and that's through the union tradesmen, every union tradesman puts so much per hour out of their paycheck for market recovery money. So, that market recovery money can make him out and say, you get a non-union bridge, bring union workers in there that are trained in like tricicloxane with respirators and so to speak that, that way. But the unions will throw money back at the city to, to bring the unions in here. So, we could, on the, on the, the maintenance garage, there was market recovery money out there. The council just didn't want to hear that. They already picked their contractor. And I think with that market recovery money that was there, they would have saved about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the project.
On the police bus works, but I didn't.
Right, and that's something we have to look at. That, those are the things out there that, that nobody knows about, nobody ever uses.
But you have to hire a union contractor, correct?
That's correct.
And then, of course, you know, with the cities, state rules, if I'm correct on this, Dave, we always have to take the lowest bid. I would always preface that by saying the lowest qualified bid, is that the better way to say it? But I like, we're going to look, listen to these points very much so. And I checked with my painting contractor about that paint, I should have probably checked with the cement man.
Right, well, I, I signed up to speak here, one quick thing, I know, like I said, me and you walk those streets. And I got a question for Paul. In, in any of this extras that are out there on the street pair, how much of that do you think is attributed to studs on snowmobiles?
I wouldn't have any way of estimating.
Because you, because you saw it with me, Mayor, that it's quite evident what these machines with studs are going towards streets out there. If we're going to keep throwing money at it, we should be taking that money for the permits, maybe raising that permit fee up and putting that towards the street repair. And any fines that, that we get through, and I don't know if we can do that, the fines that they get for running the streets without a permit, and we should have a stud fee on these sleds because they're just destroying our streets terribly.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to be taking a ride over to the ponds area to look at a situation that a resident brought to my attention with Paul, and I will show him that area, that we looked at those studs, that started damage on the streets, you get an idea.
You can, you can go, you can go right to Casey's gas station there and look at the concrete there, and you can see where the snowmobiles have been riding and out there, it's tearing the concrete up. It's tearing the concrete up, you know what it's doing to the gas line.
And, and we can make an adjustment on the, on the permits and stuff, if you have to, to put the cost back in, so, alright.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, thank you, I forget the name of that product. Then Joe, while he's brought that up to you about pressurization and stuff like that, will it make that much difference, truly?
I think it depends with the vents and stuff, it depends on how the, what the returns and where everything's going. You have to look at the heating system, I don't know how much it's going to do. My question is, with the tool room and all that, are you lowering the ceilings? I mean, I don't know, I don't have a, I've walked here with David and Joe, but I don't, I don't remember exactly which room is which, I don't know how the duct system's set up.
Well, back where the dryer been, dryer is, is that one we were talking about, the vents were above the suspended ceiling? That's that one. But I will say to you that if it was designed and has twelve foot ceilings and it's flowing all the way out, then it wasn't efficient to begin with.
Right, I mean, you're definitely losing all that heat up, up in the ceilings, like you, you see these fancy houses too with the high voltage ceiling, what you're saying, you're wondering how much they spend on the heating though. You know, and I don't disagree with that, I don't know how much, if you're going to save a ton on it, you know, I mean, you definitely will save some on it depending on that.
Well, the rooms should be warmer because you have more air around there. Will it be a negative pressure? I don't think it will be, but I mean, it's something we could check on, but I, I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
If you block all vents, depending, like codes with houses nowadays, they have, everybody has to have a break area.
Well, it's always had that.
And, well, it's.
For twenty-something, I haven't done it yet.
Well, some, some cities had, some cities did it, not a major, but you see like a nineteen sixties home that leaks more, it stayed at a positive pressure, so you technically wouldn't get it, but you still have to put it in because the city.
Right, but our fresh air intakes now became mechanical manning systems to compensate for. So, you have fresh air amples before you just had the fresh air. And I don't want to go crazy on this, but I will say to you that you had, had one, now you have both. I've always said that a house that leased it was a good thing and a bad thing.
I, I don't think it's going to be that serious of an issue with the fire department. You know, it, it may affect some, some airflow a little bit, but it's not going to be dangerous.
Well, I'll tell you what, B and M, you are a heat person, you know, dealing in the heat trade. Can you look over there and just give an idea of the vents that come over there, the returns of the heat are? We'll look, we'll look at it before we do it, but I think that's a good idea. But I don't think personally as a contractor it's going to affect it that much. I don't think you're going to, I don't think you're going to have to worry about letting the pilot keep it lit.
No.
Put it like that, negative air pressure.
Part of the problem is the doors won't shut, is that the air pressure sucks the doors shut.
Right, but it's too small rooms, right, Paul? I mean, they're, they're not big rooms to begin with, from what I, what I remember, am I wrong?
No, they're, they're smaller rooms.
Okay, so, we'll check it out, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and you know, that's one, you know, you have that expertise and that's a good thing. So, the more we, the more eligibility we know, the better decision we can make. Alright, let me get this back here, let me get this.
I guess my question is, with this topic here, how are we going to, if you want to look into that paint, do you, I mean, are we going to motion to approve it? With, depending on the paint for, to look into it?
Well, Mike, you're saying that this, the membrane, because we, we checked in, I talked to Sherwin-Williams people about that, those membranes, that paint. It went from elastomeric to the Xloxan P, XP. They swear by it, but that could be more for houses than commercial, but they said it's on both, both, and I've read reviews on it, so. But what we're going to do is we want to make sure we do it once and we do it right, that's for sure. So, is this product you're talking about, is that available through like a Sherwin-Williams type of thing like that, is that available there?
Sure is.
Okay, and, and so, give me the name of that. I think what we should do is make a motion, and then we will add that name into it or, or get a probably agree on the right product being chosen. Can we do something like that?
Oh, the other thing you can do is just continue it for two weeks, give yourself the time to go get the information, see if there's any price change, and then come back.
I know, but I, you got the weather on our side right now and that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Jeff, please.
I don't know if I need to be in the business of recommending what kind of paint to use. I'm going to let a subject matter expert decide that. What if, what if we had a motion that just established a limit of seventeen thousand dollars to affect repairs called out here in these bullet points? Let staff go, you know, do the research, you're directing them to go research, look into the HVAC, and go from there. I mean, I don't know if the, and I can't remember the chemical that this, other paint is based out of, if that comes back two thousand dollars more expensive than your cover.
Yeah, because.
If it exceeds that, then we got to have a discussion.
Yeah, because between the fourteen thousand and one hundred and seventy-five that, you know, and the amount of money we have left over, over seventeen thousand anyways. That's not a bad idea. Is that acceptable, Dave, to do that, so not to exceed the seventeen thousand for the maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
Yep, to do the repairs that are listed here, no more than seventeen thousand dollars. And then let the subject matter experts decide.
And that's just, right, because what I'm gathering right here is, let me just take a look here, I'm doing this on the calculator. Fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five plus twenty eight to sixty-five. We have seventeen thousand forty over, and that's from the, from what's left over from the study budget, from sixty thousand down to forty, two thousand nine hundred and sixty. So, we have seventeen thousand forty left over. Our original cost was forty, fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the maintenance, and we had, had twenty eight hundred and sixty-five left over. So, between the two, we have seventeen thousand forty left over from the study. So, if we don't exceed seventeen, we should be fine. Okay, very good, thank you, very good. Alright, so on that, do I have a motion to approve the fire station building maintenance and to not exceed seventeen thousand dollars in cost? Do I have a motion? Mr. Reamore, is the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Squirrel makes that second, any further discussion? Okay, Rob, now's your time.
Um, I just wanted, you know, and Paul, I appreciate the explanations, I guess, is, is the best way to do it, I figured it was cosmetic. But most things that we want to look at, like I said before, are we saving, are we doing the due diligence for our residents? And like Mr. Squirrel said, fourteen thousand dollar Band-Aid, I hate breaking that up. I hate, I hate making our taxpayers pay that. But in the long run, some of these repairs are going to save us, heating, cooling, the exterior walls, the painting the interior and exterior doors. It's just a rough Band-Aid to pull off when I've walked that building for seven years and I would have hoped years and years ago the city would have had a plan to replace that building. So, I just wanted to clarify to the residents, that's where I stand. I'm not, I'm not here to just demolish the building right away, but it, it is a rough Band-Aid to pull off knowing what you know about that building, so, it, it's tough for me to, to want to repair that thing, but we do got to save, save the taxpayers some money on some of the things that this, these repairs can do, so.
Right, but let me clarify also, what, what Rich said about roads and that is that the cost will be less the year, next year, the rafter, as we get a handle on this. So, where we did have a handle on it before, we're doing the right things, these aren't frivolous types of spending, they're good spending for maintenance. Again, you build something and then you got to maintain that something. This wasn't maintained and I was caught up to us, but I feel that this expenditure to date, next year as we talk about this, will hopefully be less money because we're doing it in the right spaces. So, your points, well taken, Rich's point taken, so is Joe's, so, thank you once again, Paul. We're at that point now for, if there are any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion proposed, motion passes, thank you, thank you for all the discussion. Alright, second area open, meeting to open to the public, Lori, do we have anybody?
Mike Roger.
You already did, okay, mind. You wait your turn, you wait your turn, or you want to get up again?
Sarah.
Oh, Sarah does it. Can, can you hold that up or push it up a little bit, because that's, that's what this resident was saying, I think.
Again, I don't.
Think it'll make a difference?
So, I don't think it's worth it personally. So, a couple of things, one of the residents who is watching online currently has a very hard time hearing. She's asking and it's not even one of our residents, she's just watching.
The text I got, she said, public speaking.
Well, she's hearing, she's having trouble hearing, like when Paul was speaking, she wasn't hearing. She said she's watched a couple of conferences and I have as well, it's sometimes very hard to hear. So, just again, try to speak loudly, if they're going to be doing, you know, a report, maybe they can, if the right tone works.
Does it help if we move the mics in closer to us, does that help?
They may, I don't know, I guess we'll have to, we'll have to watch the meeting and see who moves back.
Why are we going to solve this once and for all? I mean, do we, this is, I talked with the school about it a little bit, but it didn't go super far. I know they had a ridiculous bid for like fifty thousand dollars.
An eighteen-year-old kid teaching in parties on a Saturday night could help us.
Well, Joe has offered, Joe has offered to, to work with the school and so far we've gotten nowhere, so.
It was a good question to go with.
I'll address the school board again as well and just say, listen, we know that you're in a budget crisis, we all get it. But we have someone here who can help you, plus you lies, our people.
Yeah, I have a, I have a meeting tomorrow with Troy Ferguson.
Oh, good, I mentioned that, would you?
I would definitely mention that too.
Because it's bad for the school board meetings as well, it's not just your meetings.
And it's not ready for the residents not to be able to hear us.
Correct, yes, and then, um.
Sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, I.
It's another one of my pet peeves.
Your, your point, your point. Another resident had asked a vote, and I hate to bring this up because I know it's a sore subject, but do, in our contract with animal control, is patrolling allowed? Are they allowed to patrol or are they simply on a, what we need to recall you basis? Does anybody know that answer?
Do you know that answer?
I believe it's, it's for pickup.
It's just pickup, oh, alright.
Now, we do have, by the way, our committee is meeting on the twenty-third for them, so.
Oh, I, I thought you said twenty-fourth, twenty-third.
No, that's right, the twenty-fourth, you're correct, you're correct, because we have a little meeting on the twenty-third. I have, me, twenty-third I have a meeting, twenty-fourth I have a meeting, the twenty-fifth I have a meeting, you're right, the twenty-fourth. I have it in my calendar, so I'll be there.
And then the only other thing would be, for upcoming events, I would like to see like when planning and zoning is having their meetings, I'd like to see some of those things highlighted a little bit more. Some people do actually go online and look at the agenda and they look through it and they go, oh, there's a meeting about X, Y, Z. I think just, it's an easier way for people to see it instead of trying to dig through things. Well, there's some comments from myself and from other people as well.
Well, so are you saying about being told when the meetings are?
Well, I think, you know, we put upcoming meetings, so we have.
PNC is not listed.
I, I know that that's, we know that that's, you know, on this Wednesday.
So, PNC is not listed, Rich, is that the?
Not on this, not on this agenda.
No, it's not, so, I think, I think. No, it's not, so, I think, I think if we know, I mean, we know EDA, sometimes we have a big meeting, so I understand that, but, you know, we can, it's easier, it is for people to find that, it's just bad.
Well, you know, now that you mentioned that, you know, Chief, while we're talking about this, is there any way that we can incorporate Nixle to help us out on some of that stuff too? With, can we use Nixle for that, or is that not to be used for that?
I don't think it could be used.
Could it be? I mean, you know, today I got an email from a gentleman that, that, uh, was matured because he had talked to me when I campaigned a year and a half ago, uh, that I was committed to getting the rates down, and, um, we're getting the rates down and he wasn't aware of it. I mean, we put it out on newsletters, the Facebook posts, the website, I put it on my Facebook page, I mean, I thought I had it out everywhere, but I guess I didn't have it out enough, so, and then I emailed back, of course, and told him about it, and he thanked me for it. So, I guess what I'm saying is, really, is there any, we can put it out everywhere we possibly can, does that mean you're gonna read it? I, I can't, I'm not gonna read it to you as a bedtime story, I can tell you that, and I'm not gonna come to your house and read it to you, but I will say to you that is Nixle another opportunity to get it out there. I mean, maybe, maybe instead of four fingers, we need five fingers. I, I, I don't know, but I'm saying, if it's possible, maybe we can utilize it and get more people involved with it because we were talking about that. But I, I just marvels, I'm just marveled at the fact that, uh, with all the communication we have out there, and we do try, and you can't always call the city, I mean, that is something you can do, uh, but they tend not to want to do that. And so, they go on their Facebook and email, they complain, so I'm just saying to you, uh, if you want the answer, call city or read a newsletter, online or when it's printed, or, um, or the website too.
And then for, for, for the Nixle, I really hope that we are planning to do something for that at the night to night. That is a huge way, we need to put that up, that, that needs to be queued on our website. Do you want to keep updated on what's going on in the city? Click here and this is how you sign up for Nixle. Let's make it, let's make it some breathing.
Yeah.
Have a jumbo, but let's have something at the night to night. We have time to pull something together, let's get that open. There's lots of people who will be there, and make it available, make something available to people who do their neighborhood parties too.
Okay.
Let's have something for these people to have.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. In fact, I think that's a good idea. Chief, can we get something made up that, that I could put on my post page and the Facebook, talking about Nixle all? Do we have anything that we can put out there like that?
Link.
A link or, or something like that that we can give people?
Yeah, staff's been talking about that, so we can come up with something.
Alright, and just to let you know, with night to night, um, I've talked to County Market, they're gonna put that on their sign about night to night. Uh, we've also got Bob Haul, talked to Village Bank, and they're gonna put on their digital sign too. And I put on, uh, the St. Francis Post does it, the Facebook page has got it, and the website. So, people are hopefully gonna get out there and enjoy a wonderful evening. Uh, there's a bouncy house, face, uh, face painting, uh, the Army's gonna, Navy Marines are gonna be out there. I'm hoping to get a tug of war with them with the robe head.
Just chew.
So, down against each other.
Very anger.
Yeah, right, and there's gonna be fireworks out there, helicopter out there, it's gonna be a wonderful evening, food and music and that. So, um, it's all posted on the pages and all that, so look at it, but, uh, hope you come out there and enjoy the evening, because it'll be nice. At the, uh, St. Francis Park, so it will be there and around. So, let me turn this over now to, uh, I don't want to get too far because we're not even to the reports yet, but, uh, community development, Lori, report. Kate, you're up.
Mayor and Council, before you, is the quarterly the report for the community development department. Running briefly through it, on page one, I, I'll go through what our commercial project status is and outline those. The Bridge Street redevelopment continues, we'll continue to move forward this summer on those projects.
Can you move that mic a little closer to you, in case, just, just in case? Okay, thank you, no, just in case.
Thank you.
We'll try our best.
The, uh, second and third pages outline the two housing developments and the, uh, grading and utilities that are going in at this time. I've outlined a couple pictures on both of those. They're both moving forward quite well. At the bottom of page three, I address the Meadows. That project is still walking through the legal process for the city to recapture the undeveloped lots. The two uncompleted buildings are now in code enforcement due to their exterior conditions.
And where, where is that, where is that right now? When you say exterior, I mean, you're just not signed yet to TIP Act or whatever, or?
Correct, our city code requires that within twelve months of a building permit being issued, that the exteriors are completed for new construction, and that twelve months was of the end of June, so.
So, let me ask you this, have they, have they been TIP Act all this time, in that one-year period?
Miracles, they haven't been TIP Act. The permit was issued in June, it took them some time to get those, um, up off the ground and TIP Act, but it has been exposed TIP Act at least, I want to say, December, January to minimum.
Okay, so it's been six months going on, seven months, and I know there's a time factor with that, with sun taking its toll on that, so I'm sure Phil will be looking into that.
Correct, they, and that may be part of the delay, but being that it has not met that twelve-month requirement, it is in code enforcement right now.
Okay, alright, thank you, alright.
Page four at the top, I outline and show a picture of our current housing development. We do still have housing going in. The building department numbers were at twenty-two for new construction. We were over thirty last year at this time, so we are a little bit behind last year, but not, not a big difference as of yet, and I think as our housing continues with the Woodhaven expansion and the Rivers End, we'll catch up to those numbers quite nicely. On page five, I outline the value of the improvements going in, and all of these building numbers are year-to-date. So, year-to-date, we have seen a substantial value in the new construction coming in, being that the market is higher. And then also in the residential improvements, these are the value of our existing structures, getting those improvements and being enhanced. So, that's a great thing to see that continue as well in our existing housing. And then also shown is the total permit revenue and the revenue, um, by type. And typically, commercial is lower when you, when you look at our numbers on an annual basis. Page six, I go up, run through our, our top.
Let me just say one thing on this graph here, with the permit revenue type, of course, you're looking at two good spots would be, uh, would be, um, uh, new single-family and sack and whack.
Correct.
I like that. People with a water age should like that too. Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then on page six, our current code enforcement properties, which we continue to go through. Um, we have had one that has moved to a citation process. The others are continuing through various stages of citations and working with staff. Then in regards to planning and zoning, our twenty forty comp plan is out to all the affected jurisdictions, including the state, county, and local cities and townships for comment, and we are continuing to work with landowners for questions on either splitting parcels, vacant, vacant property registrations, rental changes, and, um, their electronic files continue to be moved over. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, uh, Rich, I'll start with you.
So, I guess now that summer's in full swing and people like me can get a shovel in the ground and expose the, the manhole covers, their subject tanks, are you starting to see the, what do you wanna call it, the forms come back?
Mayor and Council, we did send out a letter to all of the maintenance companies within, I'll say, twenty-five, thirty-mile radius of the city, trying to catch our most current providers, and we are definitely seeing more this year and, and having them participate in getting those permits like they are supposed to. So, it has made a difference to, to force that out with those maintenance providers.
Great, alright, good, good. Now, another question, good report, and I'm gonna have the same comment when we go through the chief's report, but, you know, I really like when we take credit for stuff. Is there a way, and I don't want to get into the how do you communicate to people, but, and I don't know how you, should, links to this kind of stuff be on the webpage? That says, hey, look what, I, I don't know, you know, especially, especially in your report, Chief, where you got pictures of the bike road, or you got, you know, pictures of us doing good stuff with the citizens' money.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not saying Kate's not doing good stuff, but I mean, you know, here's pictures of all of this going in. Here's, here's pictures of, of, you know, dirt being moved. You know, we are taking an active role in trying to, you know, get these people to clean up their properties. Otherwise, this kind of stuff just gets buried in a, a council package that Mayor may not ever be looked at again. I don't know, I, I really think if we're gonna put a burden on our department, has some new reporting, and they're gonna take the time to report the good stuff they do, let's make sure it gets out there more than just this form. I don't know what the right answer is, but I, I would, I think some good work being done.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, the question is, if you put it there, will they access it, read it, that's...
Well, it's up to them.
It's up to them, I mean, I agree with you a percent, but they, they, you know, and the shame of it is, is that, is that they're seeing the rate reduction now coming to a fashion, but we've been working on that for eighteen months. I mean, that, that's a factor, and so, everything we've been doing here, and there's a lot of good things in motion right here, but it's simply, people don't see all the work that goes into it. I mean, as I was campaigning this weekend, I was telling people, uh, where in your private life it may take you just a few days to plan something to get it accomplished, government can take up to six months to get that accomplished, the same thing, so, it's just, and that's, that's one of the, the things that, as a, a non-professional politician that I am, uh, frustrates me is because, like, for instance, with the rate cuts, uh, we had to go through a first reading, a second reading, a three-day publication, and then make it happen. Where, by my way, I just signed it and got it done with it, but that's not how it works, so, uh, but I, and I agree with you that the public doesn't know all the, all the things we're doing, and that's a shame, uh, because, and if they would just call and talk to Kate, our community development director, city administrator, or city clerk or whatever, assistant city clerk, whatever, I mean, they would be told all that we're doing, and there's, and, uh, I was amazed, by the way, as I was walking around, just to let you know, people, uh, through other pages, um, were, didn't know a lot of the stuff that I mentioned to them about the QuickTrip coming, system living, Rivers End, stuff like that. There were a few that didn't, uh, but I was amazed, I mean, I thought I was bringing something, you know, positive or something surprising to them, but they caught me off guard, so. Uh, that was, that was refreshing, so, alright, um, Rob, any questions for Kate?
Um, I want to piggyback on the, on the previous discussion. Is there a way we could just put, you know, rates coming down twenty percent on the bottom of our bills? For the water rates? Is there a comment section on there, or?
There is, and the comments, or the, they asked for, like, on the tenth one, and they're not on there now. They're not on this one, so the next one is already gonna have the...
Reduction, okay, that's fine. Um, I know, and I know that doesn't touch every, uh, every resident, but, um, I was just looking at page four and the other housing. Is there, um, is there a stipulation that all houses in that development need to be blue?
Mayor and Council, no, that's typically residents' choice with the new construction as to what they're choosing, but some of them do, you know...
Like the blue, I guess, that...
I mean, they have choices, but, but they want that.
Correct.
I hope it works out for them as far as property values and such. Um, I do notice that some of them kind of appear to be the same shapes, and I drove through there, and I hope it works for them, but there's a lot of blue houses out there, so, I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew there's, there's no stipulation on, on the color, for policies and stuff, but other than that, uh, it looks good, and that's just a joke about the, the picture, but, uh, I like the report, thanks.
Uh, before I move on to Joe here, um, I'd like, you know, one resident while I was campaigning this weekend was bringing up about, uh, uh, putting something in, in the water bills, because everybody does open up their water bills, so I'm, I'm playing on what you said. I'm just wondering about, Chief, would it be a good idea if we could put some literature of something in a wa, in the water bill about Nixle? Because that's gonna get out to a lot of residents, I mean, can we, can we u, utilize that format, as Rich says, like, get it out there? Can we utilize that format?
Are you talking about adding a, a little paint over there?
Yeah, can we do that?
Um, yeah, you can.
So, they got the pamphlet paper for the rain.
You, you, uh... Yeah, you can, I think, get it down to, because they actually run their bills and they down in Florida, so you have to get the material there.
Well, can you, can you let us know about that, because, you know, like I say, I mean, we have three, two, I mean, there's fifteen hundred core residents, probably more like seventeen hundred now and all that. So, basically, but that, that is another outlet, and, and we're always talking about how to get it out there. Well, you got the St. Francis Facebook post, uh, city post, you got the city website, my post, and so, and other, other residents posting that, and then Nixle, and we'll, like, if, we have to, we have to inform the public for them to know what we're talking about. And so, to me, um, this, this resident brought up to me is like, I'm gonna open up my water bill, I'm gonna see the bill, so if you got something in there, I'm not too much junk, I don't like, you know, I know when I open up, there's a lot of junk in it, toss, 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 to get the meat of it, but I'm saying...
There's, there's a cost involved with it, but yes, there is always something that...
So, something we could check on.
We just have to have it...
I would like a comment section on the bill.
There is a comment section.
So, maybe, maybe a little cheaper than stuffing the envelope, that, that would be my thing.
That comment section is, is pretty small, if you look at your bills. I do put comments on there every month.
Like, like the mayor said, if we start stuffing the envelope, I'm gonna take the bill and shake it, and all the rest of it's gonna get ripped in half and gone in the recycle bin, but if it's on the bill and I open it up and, and read, you know...
I mean, I, I don't know if they, if they could do something like that, but maybe it's something we should reach out to them and see what we can do. But I'm saying, not where we over, overdo it, but like something on Nixle that we're promoting or something like that, or something important that we want to get out. It might have, you know, like, like I say, I don't, when I open up, when I get a, a bill that's got like two or three things in there, you know, I'm just going through it, taking those pieces and shredding them, and just getting the meat of it, you know, meat of it, so, uh, but at the same time, if it's another outlet, so, if we get some people involved, because I find that people who like to be texted, or like the post, or the Facebook, or like the website, it's everything from mobile or whatever, everybody's got their different way of communicating, and there's so many choices out there, so, just try to get as many as we can and hopefully get it raised to the public's attention, because I, I really would like to see this Nixle promoted properly and used for the good of the city and the safety of the city, so. Alright, Joe, your comments on this report.
Very good report, thank you. I'm happy to do what you're doing, you've been doing great. It's pretty straightforward, it's easy to read, I appreciate that, and I think we can find a way, like Rich said, to get some of this information out. I know you've mentioned to me that you had a lot of, a lot of comments on code enforcement.
Yep.
You're out campaigning, and I mean, some of that information appeared, so I think it's, it's a good way to communicate, um, that we're doing it. I'm hoping with the nicer weather here, uh, it's not ninety degrees every day, that we see more permits getting pulled, and then we have some projects coming up, hopefully to maybe that number jump up, so, thank you.
Okay, um, I want to just point out that, um, uh, there's also, right now, we have, um, is it thirty, is it twelve, thirteen acres or twelve acres at the front of the Public Works building for commercial across on, on forty-seven? I got that one right?
That's thirteen acres.
Thirteen acres, okay, and then, and then, uh, the hundred twenty-four is not, is on the market yet, the one on quarter of the Bass, hundred forty-seven?
I don't know if it's on the public market yet.
But it will, it, it's supposedly going to be coming out.
Correct.
And then there was one other site that I think I got wrong, or last time I mentioned it?
There's thirty-three acres north of the bottle shop.
North of the, of the, of what shop then?
Of the bottle shop or the auto shop, the leader store, yep.
Okay, okay, so there's thirty acres there, so we had, we had a commercial property across from the Public Works, and then, and then don't we have a, is there, isn't there something by the salvage company or auto company or something like that you told me? Or I got that one wrong? Well, I thought south of it or something like that, was there some acres there available, or?
That I'm not aware of.
I thought there was a...
There's, probably south of O'Reilly Auto also for sale.
Okay, 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 so those are some things hopefully coming in the future for Works, and that is all in our MUSA area, which is our municipal urban service area, so that's a good thing, not a bad thing, so, um, so, uh, okay, uh, oh, okay, go ahead, Rob.
And one more, and this could be to, to the legal team, is this public record, this six-page report? Could we just attach it to the Facebook page and the city page? Because if, if residents are following the city, as soon as something pops up, they're gonna be able to see it. Whether they read it or not, but it's available to them, and if, you know, we provide that link to them, um, as easy as we attach it to this agenda, can be attached to the St. Francis Facebook page and the webpage.
You're talking about, you're like, the link to this report?
Yep, just...
I'm gonna do one post to link this report, and I do another post to link this report.
Okay.
Not to leave Paul's report out, but that was kind of dry.
But, Joe, is that... I mean, I, I understand, you know, their concerns and my concerns is getting this information out, I mean, so the public's informed of what we're doing, I mean, because, you know, otherwise, they, you don't see anything and they wonder what, what we're doing up there, there's a lot of stuff coming.
Right.
So, and, and it's mu, much better to have them on board with us.
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not internet savvy by any means, but the way it's attached to the city page as far as the agenda, it, it could be just like a post, and it could be just as simple as post to the St. Francis, post to the agenda area, and then goes out as a St. Francis post, not necessarily go look for the agenda, you know?
We can absolutely send it out.
Yeah, versus downloading the whole agenda, going to a hundred-one pages, figuring out where it is, like, we have to do that.
It's just constant posts, and I don't know how difficult or easy that is, I'm not internet savvy, but it could be as, when you connect all these reports together, St. Francis, Facebook page gets that link, and it just goes out there somehow.
Joe's internet savvy, that's why we hired him.
Yes, right. Well, because, I mean, some of our packets could be two hundred-some pages, and they're not gonna download that and read all through it, so, yeah, just having it go right directly to it.
Just make a PDF of it.
Yeah, yeah, good, very good, good discussion. Alright, Kate, thank you, and I was a little, I liked it a lot, uh, I'm excited about what's going on, so, uh, moving on. Uh, I'm excited about what's going on. So, uh, moving on, Todd, you're up.
Uh, Mayor Council, in your package, you'll see the second quarter report from the Police Department. Uh, overall, calls for service did increase in the second quarter, over the first quarter by about fifteen percent. Um, thefts did increase in the second quarter largely in part due to a rash of thefts we had toward the end of May. Two suspects were arrested and charged in connection to thefts and burglaries that occurred, um, over the course of that morning here in the city. Uh, DWIs have also increased during the second quarter. And unfortunately, many of these intoxicated drivers are actually driving during the day, um, before seven o'clock. So fortunately, our, our day officers and our night officers are, are pretty observant and able to remove these drivers from the road all, even, even though it's not during your prime time DWI typical hours. Traffic enforcement remains a high priority. Uh, in addition to moving the speed sign around in different residential areas, we've also been putting officers at different locations, uh, doing stationary radar details for, for traffic enforcement, speed enforcement. Uh, the Police Department was involved in many events during the, the second quarter that you can see in your packets there. Uh, Winning With Cops was a new one for us this year, which was a huge success. Uh, High School Ma Crash, this was their second event that they held there. Um, first event was two thousand sixteen. Uh, Pet Clinic, Bike Rodeo and Darcy Clinic, uh, were all very successful. Um, and it just provides a great way for us to interact with the public and provide a world education at the same time. Um, so that's just kind of a quick overview of the, the report that you have in front of you. Uh, the rest of the statistics are in front of you. If you guys have any questions, I can try to answer them.
I, I have one question here. This, this, uh, Winning With Cops community outreach program, how tall is that one?
Yeah, he's a big kid. I don't know, I don't know how tall he was, but I wouldn't.
Oh, you have a police officer next to him and he's a midget compared to this guy.
Yeah, he's definitely six something.
I don't think he played basketball or what, but he definitely changed the light bulb. Usually on an eight-foot ceiling, I could see that.
Definitely.
I just thought, I thought, good report and all that. I, I still amazed that, um, like on the off week package that I read about the DWIs and stuff like this, I'm just amazed that people are out there swerving a line and, and don't think they're going to be noticed or they have other violations and they're driving drunk.
Yeah, and unfortunately, a lot of these DWIs we're seeing, even during the day, um, they're not just a little bit over the limit, they're way, way over the limit.
Really?
They shouldn't be walking a little and driving. So it's a little scary at the same time, but we're still, we're getting some of them off.
Very good. And, and like I say, again, some of the reports I've read, they've also, some of these people have other violations, uh, you know, that they have. And that's always, that doesn't make it worse. So you think they'd be more safe than sorry, but I guess that's how they have to learn. But no, good report and I, I like the coverage. So. Um, I'm going to turn this over to Joe first. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, well, I talked to you a little bit beforehand, just what the numbers going up, but I think a lot of that has to do with the, the weather getting nicer. It could be an all more, even more, it could be that way. I was curious, I think you brought up the speed thing, because I know I sent you an email a while back and I looked in my emails to try to find there to be out of this. I'm playing about her neighborhood. Like, I seen your post on Facebook about it and I couldn't find that. I was trying to get a hold of her. So I could talk to her, because she claimed that we promised that we were going to.
Oh, if, if it's the same female, I believe, your doctor.
Or something.
Yeah, we had started to go and speak with her. Um, it turns out she has some other concerns besides speed. I'm not sure whether the speed get in there, but, uh, and, and certain locations just don't work for speed signs. Um, it has to be along a straight stretch and if there's curves or intersections in the area, it can, it can just give us a bunch of false data.
Yeah.
Have that happen. Um, so it wasn't an ideal location for that. Um, we did work some other things out and stuck some officers out there. Like I mentioned, some of the stationary details, um, but I started to speak with that.
I just know she brought up something that I know we didn't promise her anything, but I was trying to, I know I, I talked to her and I said, well, we can look into it. And I mentioned it to you and then I couldn't find, I couldn't find it in the, in the email or, or locator information. So. If you have any here that's watching out of line, feel free to reach out to me.
Now, uh, by the way, in those areas that you're talking about where the sign doesn't do well, then we decide stationary, do we also do like the radar gun there through that?
Yep, and that's where we want to talk a little more as a stationary line. So, and, and that's all.
And, and I want to commend, uh, you, uh, as Chief there, to take it out of your forfeiture fund, I believe it is? That you took the cost of, of, of both the signs and then the radar gun. It was the second sign, the radar gun, because we had the first one already. But I, I commend you on that because I think they're, they're just good tools. I mean, there's, there's some streets of people, you know, what I'm amazed at is they see the sign and they see that they read the sign or whatever by speeding it. So it says thirty and they want to see it go faster. I'll find, in other words, how much faster the sign will read. Well.
You know, we've gotten people doing that.
Really? Wow, okay. Um, Joey, anything else? Rob there?
Um, I missed the Bike Rodeo this year. I did go last year and, and looking at the pictures, um, I want to get this out to the residents. The same as Kate's. Um, throw it on Facebook, throw it on the city page. Um, the Bike Rodeo, that's a great place to have it. I know the first one, it was a bit warm. Um, and I just, I was out of town and missed it. But, um, the report is really good. You guys are doing a lot of good things for the community and I commend you for it. Um, Rich?
Yeah, I hope everything that Rob just said, you're doing a great job. And yeah, let's take credit for all the good stuff we're doing for the community. I do want to talk about the DWIs a little bit more. And I don't know if it's just because we're getting good reports and we're seeing the data. But it seems like every time we get a report, the DWI numbers go up. And I don't know if it's, if there's any kind of, if there's an indication that it's folks that are just passing through town, if it's people that are coming home, if it's people that are leaving our establishments. And where I'm going is, it almost seems, seems like, obviously, the message is not getting through to some people. You know, we allow some establishments in the city to serve alcohol, but I believe there comes responsibility with that, right? They're not supposed to serve intoxicated folks, right?
Right, right.
And I'm not saying, don't get me wrong, if anybody's watching this, I'm not blaming this problem on them. But I don't know if at some point, does it get to the point where we need to send them a letter or remind them of their responsibility? Or it could just be just people passing through. I don't know, but.
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. I mean, the day we had, it's a little bit of both and.
But especially the day ones are really troublesome.
Yep, and we've certainly had them, we've certainly seen them from local establishments. Um, we have sent letters to all of our local establishments. Last time we, they renewed their regular licenses. So.
Okay, good.
I even discussed personally with some staff that were willing to do that, um, and just discuss certain laws and things like that that they should be watching for. And, and our local businesses, at least the majority of them, are very good in identifying and teaching their staff on who and whom to serve to. But a lot of them are passing through. A lot of our incidents we're seeing are from people that, you know, to be honest with you, a lot of them were so drunk, they didn't know where they were at. So, um, I think we had one from Golden Valley, I believe. And, and I don't know if they're just touring around and, and seeing how many places we can stop at or what. But yeah, I mean, a lot of them are not local people and, and certainly, certainly not all of them are coming from our establishments. So that's a common question.
Well, you know, what you say about establishment, which is true, because I used to be in the liquor business years ago on sale and, and your, and your insurance. You want to make sure you don't serve someone intoxicated. Because if they get in an accident, then you got that law that they could sue in that.
Absolutely.
It can be a real, real catcher on spray on, on, on your establishment. So, no, but you're saying how drunk they were and that. I mean, somebody driving from Golden Valley just happened to end up in St. Francis, I mean, just on the whim. But, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's shocking. I mean, you know, I, I just don't understand.
And I see more in the, in the next off week, you know, in the next off week, unfortunately, it's people still in the next.
Rich, anything else?
Okay, nope. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Todd. Um, moving on now, um, to the Public Works monthly report.
Mayor Council, in your packets tonight, uh, you'll see our June Public Works monthly reports. Some things that I'd like to point out. In June, we did see some significant water production, uh, you know, between almost, well, a little over twenty million gallons of water pumped to our water treatment plant to make into drinking water. A lot of that, uh, does go on grass. So just, just keep that in mind when we do see those significant upticks in production. Uh, you could compare that to the influence, uh, at the wastewater plant and see that wastewater plant was at about, just about ten millions of in- influence, ten million gallons. So you can assume that about ten million gallons of water went on lawns. Just, just a comparison there.
So sprinkler systems and whatnot, right?
Yeah.
But the public's paying for it, of course, so.
Right.
No, but that's the algebra.
Um, again, good results at our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, on page three, uh, one of the projects that we have been working on and trying to focus on is, we do have to get rid of our biosolids that are accumulating at our wastewater treatment plant and our biosolid storage tanks. Uh, we have approximately one year of storage within those facilities based on the amount of influence coming into the, the wastewater treatment plant. But, um, this does take a little bit of time to facilitate and, and create, uh, land that we can apply our biosolids to or find a way to dispose of those solids through a landfill or incineration. Um, we will be coming forward with those quotes sometime soon, once we have them, so that you can see, you know, this is a, a, another expense that is associated with our, our wastewater treatment facility. And it's been a part of the plan from the start that this is something that we will have to take care of. But it will be a significant number once we have that.
Alright, let me ask you this though, and I've talked to you about this before. I want to bring up the council staff here and the residents. We have a hundred eighty-three acres in Isanty, okay? Uh, well, could we do something with that land for those biosolids and say some cost to the city as far as a place to put it?
Uh, Mayor Council, yes. Uh, the thing that we need to be aware of when we do apply biosolids to any land, that land cannot be used for anything for three years after that final application, other than, um, a type of crop land that is not consumed by people. So it has to be consumed by animals first.
And is there, now, uh, we did visit a blue lake plant and, and they packaged this biosolid into, uh, sold it to, uh, farmers and that. I mean, I know that could be a more costly project and all that, but I'm just trying to give options of what we can do here to save money. And I mean, I'm not saying that the hundred eighty-three acres, it's sitting there idle for eleven years, but we lease it out every year. But I mean, I just want to put it on the table, I want to see that if after all these other places that should be looking at to take care of this, if it doesn't, we, we'll last, be a last ditch effort. We have someplace to do it with if we have to. Because we'll have to get rid of these biosolids sooner or later, sooner than later, um, or these coming up anyways, like you said, in the year. Um, also, I'm just wondering about, maybe worth looking into about something about packaging this up and seeing if we could sell it as fertilizer to farmers. It makes a profit. I don't know. Is it worth checking into?
The, uh, part about drying our biosolids can be quite expensive. Uh, to buy a or build a facility that dries the sludge to a class A type sludge, uh, is, is a significant, uh, number.
Okay.
And it is a, a large facility that would be needed to dry this into a fertilizer-based.
And you're, and wait, wait, now you're chicky with what, uh, farmers or, or companies that handle this kind of stuff?
We've met with three companies that, uh, can handle these, uh, type of situations. Um, one has already backed out, but we're hopeful that we'll get two qualifying quotes from these other two that do this job.
Okay. But if worst comes to the worst, we can utilize that hundred eighty-three if necessary?
Um, it, it is a possibility, yes. Uh, the, there are, not only working with these companies, these companies have to work with the MPCA, who works with the owners of the property of, that we would be applying this land to. Uh, and there's a lot of other things that happen with this. Uh, they survey the property, they, they do drainage studies. They make sure that the property is, um, going to absorb the nutrients properly. It's not too close to a public road, not too close to any public waters. So your hundred and eighty acres that you think you can apply everything to.
Might only be half or less.
Might only be two and after everything is all said and done. I, I'm being a little over-exaggerating, I guess, but that is a potential.
Well, I'm just concerned that if one company backed out, the other two could back out, then what? I mean, the biosolids are going to keep, be created, so we have to do something.
These, these other two companies are very good at, at doing this in Minnesota. What we do struggle with a little bit is our Minnesota rules, they are a little bit more strict. Uh, the company that did back out, uh, wasn't, uh, real comfortable with working with the MPCA and going through that process with them. These other two are, are, this is what they do.
Okay, and I'm going to ask you another question here. Um, you know, and this is hindsight twenty-twenty. But, uh, should we have incorporated the biosolids, some structure to, to create a, a product that we could sell or something like that? Or they can have like that to, to recycle the biosolids versus reclaiming water and things like that that we did in the, in the system, in the wastewater treatment facility?
We did investigate, uh, building a dryer-type system to dry the biosolids so that we could, um, use, you know, give it away. Big Lake gives it away as fertilizer. But their system was a very expensive system and it is a, an expensive system to operate. So, um, we, we investigated that and felt that it was a bit cost prohibitive at the time, so.
Well, these two other companies you mentioned are, are, you know, you work with the state of the MPCA?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, uh, I'll move aside. Rob, any questions?
Oh, I just, uh, great report. I think if we've, we put this on, uh, the Facebook page.
No.
Paul, that's a very good report. I, I, I just can't say enough. Um, I like your little note here on the bottom. Please, residents, if you can't, if it doesn't come out of your body, don't flush it. We have four rags flushed, um, and the note on the bottom is it costs an average of four man-hours to unplug those pumps. That's just if they get flushed. If these pumps fail due to flushing rags, we as the residents who pay the bills for our wastewater treatment facility, pay that bill. So we can't blame the, the sewer people. They're not coming over here flushing rags down our systems. So please don't flush rags down our system because we ultimately pay for it. Otherwise, the report is great. Kate?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yeah, I'll get inside, Paul. No, it's a good report. I did have one question. I think it's probably in here every month, but it just stuck out for some reason because we're talking about page three. But the meter rereads, we spend, somebody spends half a week each month rereading meters remotes that were not read by Opus. Uh, so why aren't the meters read to begin with, but people were paying to be the readers? Or are these just things they can't get to and they go in and?
Uh, many times it's things that they can't get to. There's a locked door or there's a dog. Um, they're not comfortable in approaching the dog, uh, or a locked gate. Sometimes the, the touchpads will fail and they're unable to get a reading from it. And typically what we do on these is we'll send a, or we'll hang a door hanger saying, hey, we need to check out your meter, get a reading from you and, and set up an appointment to do that. And most people will call and they'll set up the appointment and go over and take care of it. Um, you know, a lot of times it's, okay, I'll lock, I'll lock up the dot hook, you can come and read the meter. Uh, so.
Okay. Alright, Rich, a little.
And while, and while, on that subject, by the way, uh, the rereads and of course, like you just mentioned, uh, the, the pad, another pad that the readers are using, you know? They can make a mistake. So if you see a, a real shift, if you're steadily using like twelve thousand gallons or five thousand gallons steadily, all of a sudden you see a spike of fifty gallons, thousand gallons or whatever, you know? You might want to call the city, call Darcy up at the finance, finance department, or call Public Works gen over there and, uh, they can help you with that. But because we're human, mistakes can be made. So, um, that's just something, like I say, if you're averaging five thousand gallons and obviously you see a spike of fifty-five thousand gallons and you know, you're not at a golf course or something, you might want to make a call. Okay? Definitely want to add some, for something. Joe, what do you think?
I don't know anything to add. Thank you.
Good report. I have, I listened to the rereads on it, by the way. And I totally agree with Rob, um, and, and Paul. If it doesn't come out of you, don't flush it. And don't believe on the whites that they can flush it, they can't. It doesn't work. Um, alright, thank you, Paul.
One, one other thing I'd like to mention is just our scheduling for. One, one other thing I'd like to mention is just our scheduling for consortium where the street, uh, street consortium where crack filling and seal coating. Crack filling, we did get a notification today that one of the supervisors will be contacting us by the end of this week to give us our schedule. So I believe they're working in handover now and we're next on the list. So probably next week, we'll be seeing crack filling. And then seal coating, we are at the end of the schedule for seal coating. And it looks like about the end of August, we'd be having that, that happen. So.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Moving on right now to council member reports. Now, I'll start with Joe.
I do not have a lot to report of whether any way it is in being the HVAC business. I've been very busy. I haven't had a lot in the city, unfortunately. Hope to see everybody out there. Thank you, Matt, and Mike.
Rich?
Um, yeah, I was gonna say the night to unite, I think it sounded like it's gonna be a, one of our better ones, and we got everybody going in the same direction and should be a good night. I think we have, we'll have a council meeting before then, right? First meeting in August will be.
Yeah, what, is there?
Anyway, I guess that's not important. Hopefully, we come up to that. I did have a question. When I was driving over here, I came across on two hundred and thirty-third.
Yeah, the day before, by the way.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I was coming across on two hundred and thirty-third, then to turn north on forty-seven right there in front of the liquor store. I hope Mid Dot got plans to come and mow the weeds. Because if you're looking south, to try to look at the south incoming traffic, the weeds are kind of tall right there. And then about thirty yards down is one of the orange signs, either saying trucks hauling or, or roadwork ahead. And it, there was a motorcycle coming northbound. I couldn't see. I mean, I could see him once he passed that, that roadwork sign. You know, I could have made my decision to turn north by then. So I think we need to look at that intersection. It's the way things are right now today with the tall weeds and that roadwork sign just out there. That might be an accident waiting to happen. I know it's not our responsibility, but I don't know. You want to go check it out, see if you can make a phone call.
Mayor, council members scored all their, the Mid Dot tractor was in town today mowing.
So that one you got with the weed whacker?
How far north he came, I'm not sure, but he, he had started mowing. He did. And we are at that two thirty-third, there is the divide between the metro section of Mid Dot and that northern section of Mid Dot or out of the brain office. So there'll be a different, probably a different tractor that will be coming south. So, but we can, we can reach out to them.
Okay. But you might want to look at where that roadwork sign is. And then right there, were two lanes turned into the one. And then you got, and it might get time out, it's coming, I was saying, oncoming traffic that wanted to come the other direction. And then yeah, when the last minute, she was gonna turn her blinker on and then it warned me the chute was gonna go north to. You've got a lot of stuff going on. Then you got an orange sign, or T was silver, and you'll go in that direction. And blocking your view, it's, I think it's an accident waiting to happen. That's all I have.
Thanks, Rich. Rob?
Um, I didn't have too much going on this week. I want to just thank the department heads for their reports. They were really informative. And can't wait for night to unite. That's it.
Okay. First of all, I want to bring up, can we, Kate, I was wondering if we could stick a tab on the website, just label links. And then someone could punch that and then they would be able to see a link for a report or something like that. Is that possible? Or some idea we could do? I could talk to Jen about it, but is that something, remember? Remember, we had so many tabs that we're gonna put on there, didn't want to go too much?
No, Mayor, Council, I think you've got to be careful with how much we put on that front page. One thing we can do, for example, in the Community Development Department page, I do have a reports link within it, which you could then send back out. You know, if something that was just generically put as a link, people might not understand or really realize what they're clicking on it for. So it would require more explanation.
So basically, police, Public Works, or yourself, you put a link on that your individual part of the website.
Correct. Mayor, Council, each one of us has our own department page, so we can put our reports or information there. And then when you do either a Facebook post or email lapse, you can take that link from that individual department and send that out.
Yeah, because I agree, we don't want too much on there. It just turns them off. We already had that before. It was hard to find stuff, so we don't want to do that. Okay. All right, then moving on. Like I said before about meters, if you have, if you see a spike in a reading, if it's not a leak, it's gotta be something with the meter and all that. Call us. Call again, Darcy, or Mola, or Finance Director, or call our Public Works Department Jen over there, and she'll send the guys out to look at it and give you some hints on maybe how to save, save some water. Also, I want to tell people that there are the water saving tips that I put on the website before. I'll just mention to you, while you're watering lawns, best thing I can advise is no more than fifteen minutes of water in each zone. And water early in the morning, more like fortnight. Right now, with sixty, seventy degrees at night, you can water three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, and before the sun beats the heck out of it. As it gets cooler, of course, you don't want to do that because you could start growing mushrooms in your yard. But at the same time, while it's warmer, two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, water. I mean, I drive by and I'm walking around this weekend. I saw people watering from, there's no watering from ten to seven, ten AM to seven PM, but you're seeing people water their lawns. You're not doing the walk, lawn to be good. The sun's just heating that up fast enough, and you can put it down and actually cook in your lawn. So do some common sense with your watering. And if you want any hints and all that, go on the website or call the city. We'll get all the hints we can. I'm gonna help you out. The rate reduction will go affect September tenth for everybody. We had to go through, again, a first reading, a second reading, and a publication for thirty days, but it will be on your September tenth bill. Moving on, I had, walking around, I had someone mention to me about roundabouts and the flowers in the middle of the roundabouts. So I gave Princeton a call. Princeton was dealing with Mid Dot, State Mid Dot on that. They did get permission, had a sign, had council approval, to sign a contract. But they do have a group of residents that actually put flowers there and take care of it. So I'm gonna, I just got the report today. I'm gonna look into it and pursue it a little bit. And I'll probably have a discussion with you, Kate, about it and see what we can do. I wouldn't mind seeing that. I mean, other than a reason, flowers would be nice. And Princeton did it because it's kind of like at the entrance of the city. So they wanted to dress it up and, and so what they did, the first two years, from what I understand, the contractor had to take care of it. Then after that, it went to the city, and then the city turned over to the public. But they have a group of volunteers under agreement with the city to take care of. And they are. So maybe we can do that here. Anyways, I will look into the program further. As I said before, I just had it sent to me the day before the meeting. So I'll look at it and see where we can go with that. But if you have an idea out there in, in the public, bring it to our attention. We cannot address an issue unless we know what the issue is. So that helps us a lot. Night to unite, August seventh, five thirty to eight thirty PM, gonna be a lot of activities at the St. Francis Community Park. Come out, enjoy the day. Paul set up for mosquito, uh, uh, patrol to get out there. Like I said before, bouncy houses. The bouncy house will be out there. Face paint will be there. That rope, ropes with the Marines and the Army hoses, the tiny thing that they did last year. There'll be some exhibits, I think Jody Black's gonna be doing, Officer Black will be doing for, for not, not this year.
It'd be a, a penny.
Okay, okay. There's a lot of things to do. Food and music, of course. Come out there and meet your neighbors. It's a good, good time to do it. That's what summer's all about. Also, I want to tell you that I'll be walking the neighborhoods from now until November. Good exercise for me. So if you see me knocking on your door and realize it is your mayor and not some, not some flunky from another city, or something like that, that I am who I am. Anyway, so, you know, I've met some people that kind of hesitated to let me on the lot, but I am the mayor, so please let me talk to you, if you can. I have some other issues. By the way, code compliance is one of the main issues that was brought up to me while we were walking. It was kind of strange, because I had about five or six residents talking about code compliance, as I talked to Kate earlier this morning about it. And I know it's been one of the topics we, as a council, are discussing. And Mike Rogers brought that up from EPA and that. So we are now looking into two different ways to do that for next year or for earlier, would be through an internship or a retiree. And there was one gentleman that I passed the name on to, and Kate's gonna check that out with Joe Coleman, our city administrator, of a retiree that would be open to doing a part-time code compliance. We'll check that out, see how that comes up. But there is a concern there, and we are aware of the concern from the residents, and we are addressing it. But we don't want to have it as a full-time job, as we mentioned. We don't want to run up a, a huge expense for it, but we know there's a need for it, so we are looking into it. So be, rest assured that when you bring something up to us, we do look into it with our, with a full, a due diligence. Again, we may not be able to give you the answer that you want, but we will give you an answer that is honest and researched. For instance, there was at the last meeting, a gentleman, Ray Jones, that came here and said that Elk River exempted MSO agricultural land. I did call, ran Wisner, Wisner over there and talked to him in Elk River, and that is not true. There's no, no exemptions in, in Elk River. So I relayed that to Ray, and he was thankful to have me check that out. So once again, if you have an issue, bring it up. We want to address it, but we won't, can't do that unless we know what the issue is. So on that, I will say once again, Tuesday, August seventh, night to unite, please come out and enjoy the evening with all of us. On that, if there's no future, further business, I take it from everybody. One other thing I want to mention, Monday, the twenty-third, at six o'clock at the Community Center at Riverbank, work session. So all the residents in Riverbank have been emailed already. I can't get their notice?
Yes, they have.
Please come out, as many of you, if not all of you as you can. We still have all the work sessions, we've only gotten a third of you. You need to come out. This is the last meeting that the city will be putting on for Riverbank. It would be good for you to come out and force and talk to us and work with us to get a solution in that area. Okay? Any other further business? And on that, I will call and adjournment of this meeting at eight o'clock. Thank you.